Yeah. We good?
Sure. Same here, same barber, same barber.
Oh geez. No, he's on there.
A little bit, not tons sometimes, but because you're on.
Oh, Jamie, did you go home?
Okay, because I was down at the office, I didn't see you. Hey, how are you? Great to see you.
Familiar with this gathering? We're trying to do, look familiar?
It's been a while, right? Oh my goodness. So, Michael, what do we have to call you now? Representative Engleberger? Supervisor Engleberger. Light back.
Okay. We'll make sure everybody knows him.
What township?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we're shooting for. We're going to talk about that. Good, good. Well, he hasn't had on here yet. Yeah, I'm going to cover as much as I can and then some of it will cover.
Hey, Tim?
Yes. Are you talking on the west side of the river?
Yes, I hear you.
Tim, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in the car, I'm about five minutes out. I'll be there in just a few minutes.
Okay.
All right.
All right, we'll leave you a spot. We're going to give it just a couple of minutes yet. Is everybody here that wishes to speak signed up? If you're not, there is a form out there, you can fill it out quick and you can just bring it right up. That way we have everybody.
Said you're going to start in about a couple of minutes.
Yeah, a couple of minutes.
I want him to take one last look at the county.
Oh.
Good design. Double certification section, one last time. I'll take a picture in the morning.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm going to cover as much as I can and then some of it will cover.
Hey, Tim?
Yes. Are you talking on the west side of the river?
Yes, I hear you.
Tim, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in the car, I'm about five minutes out. I'll be there in just a few minutes.
Okay.
All right.
He was from state.
All right, we'll leave you a spot. We're going to give it just a couple of minutes yet. Is everybody here that wishes to speak signed up? If you're not, there is a form out there, you can fill it out quick and you can just bring it right up. That way we have everybody.
Said you're going to start in about a couple of minutes.
Yeah, a couple of minutes.
Responded. Want him to take one last look at the county.
Oh.
Stop. Yeah. Good design. Double verification section, one last time. I'll take a picture in the morning.
Yeah.
You have an opus coming over though.
For this.
That's right, yeah, yeah, it's not even cranky. Get going. You.
That's okay. Is that? Yeah.
Two weeks. If we start, I could do it again. Two weeks. Leave it open.
Start.
So, your call.
I see the advantage, can imagine what they have to hold. If you don't have, well, you just keep having this.
Yeah, I got it. I got.
Just to push it, you know, so.
Yeah.
Maybe it doesn't need, yes.
With that?
That'd be the death.
That would be awesome.
The opportunity to, four hundred hours in the summer, that leaves us with the other hours where.
Thirty-nine.
It does, yeah, okay.
So, it's just under.
So, we're probably, if they were a thousand, right? Tad. It's just.
Two people, yeah.
Those types of things.
Cameron.
Yeah, he's.
Me, him, me, kid. You doing okay?
Yeah. Remind me to.
He. Seems pretty mean, he's very person.
He's just fit in, and he's done really nice. Such a right.
He was quick.
Yeah. That's right.
Yes.
All right, we're going to get started then. Good evening and welcome, it's Tuesday, February twenty eighth of twenty twenty-three. This is the Stoughton City Council meeting and the first order of business would be the roll call.
Okay, Raph.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here.
Mayaski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Vanegas.
Here.
Takolski.
Here.
Caravello.
Here.
We have twelve alters present.
All right, thank you Candy. Certification of compliance with open meetings laws, this meeting was legally posted, so we're able to have it. The minutes and reports are in the packet and the next item would be the public comment period and we have several people signed up to speak tonight and I'll just go through a couple of things quickly. We do have rules, we're government, we have rules in government, in case you didn't know that. Yeah, so our public comment rules, basically, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. In our policy, it says that we can have a maximum of thirty minutes, but.
It's usually for present.
Yeah, and it can be for public comment as well, so we, we want to keep things going, so everybody has an opportunity to speak. Couple of things you should know, those of you that are here to speak tonight regarding the QuickTrip, the city attorney is going to kind of give us a presentation later on when we get into the agenda item about how the conditional use permit law has changed in the last several years and how that applies to the decision that the city council needs to make. And I would just say that the staff recommendation would be not to take any action tonight because there's two things that we want to be able to do, we want to be able to schedule another public hearing because we learned through the process that some of the residents within three hundred feet of the proposed development were not adequately notified about the last public hearing that we had at the plan commission. And we have a policy that says that they should know that the meeting is going on and Director Shield will walk us through basically how that happened, so we want to schedule another public hearing and we'd like to do that, right now we're looking at in our April meeting, we want to have a joint meeting between the Plan Commission and the city council so we can get additional public input. The way the conditional use permit laws work, and you'll hear more of this later, is that the city council will make their decision based on the evidence, the evidence will be the testimony that will occur at the Plan Commission meeting, including the public hearings that were held at the Plan Commission. Your comments tonight are public comments, those are different than comments that would be made at a public hearing, so if you want your testimony to be used in the decision making, I would encourage you to come back for that next public hearing if you haven't already spoke at the last one. Hopefully I didn't confuse anybody by all that. So, right now we're scheduling, planning on having that a public hearing, I believe at, is it April eleventh? It's, yeah, April eleventh, so what we'd like to do is have a joint meeting with the Plan Commission members and the city council members, that way the city council and the people that want to speak during the public hearing will only have to do it once, so they won't have to do it to the Plan Commission and then feel like they need to come back and have the city council review all that information from the Plan Commission to make their decision. As I said, the city attorney will explain that process later, but I wanted you to know that tonight, that certainly your comments will be heard, but legally, the comments you make tonight won't be part of that decision making process, those will, those comments at the public hearing will be though, so you'll have another opportunity to fine tune whatever it is you'd like to say tonight. So I wanted to let you know that from the outset before we get into the public hearing and then, or the public comments, I should say, and then we'll kind of go through the rest when we get into the agenda item, the city attorney will have some slides, Planning Director Shield can talk about the notice that we'll be putting out for the public hearing, so you can all be in a position to look forward at that time. So I have a list, it's pretty long and it's, I'm going to try to make sure that I'm somewhere near the order that they came in, some of them came in through email, some of them were forwarded to me by other city staff and some of them were signed up tonight, so we'll go through them, if I miss anybody, you'll still have a chance to speak. Some of them, when they filled out the forms, said they only want to register either in support or oppose to the project, I can read those out, if those folks are here or on Zoom, they'll still have the ability to speak if they would like. So, having said all that, the first person that I had signed up was Robert, is it Krieger? When you come up to the podium here, like I said, you'll have three minutes and you'll want to adjust the microphone, that way everybody will be able to hear you.
Thank.
I have it.
Thank you. I'm a resident at three sixty-five Stony Ridge Trail, I've been a resident of the neighborhood since nineteen ninety-nine and back in twenty twenty, we voiced opposition to the QuickTrip plan for various reasons, building a large scale convenience store of that type in our neighborhood does not promote growth and does not, and posed several issues to the overall neighborhood. First off is that the, obviously the public outreach, which Mayor Swadley had indicated that there's going to have to be more outreach and back in twenty twenty, we voiced our opinion that not only just the residents that were within a three hundred foot radius of the QuickTrip should have been informed because of the fact that Stony Ridge especially is impacted as that convenience store is looking to exit out onto Cedar Brook, that every single resident in the neighborhood should have the ability to actually come before the Planning Commission. There's, and as, as we know, there will be significantly more traffic in and out of the neighborhood, we have two daycare centers now, one, which is the first Weeble World and the second one, which is now across Highway M, and there is a fair amount of traffic that comes in and out of those facilities and there is going to be additional risk that's put at the, the feet of the children. There's also increased risk to pedestrians and bicyclists that pass by this area en route to the city, we are, we are a family that uses the city, we access the city from the neighborhood and it's hard enough to get across N, let alone getting through area where there's going to be increased congestion. As, as I was looking through the notes, the traffic study that was used for this application appears to be over five years old, does not take into account the addition of the Weeble World across N, Dane County Sheriff's Department and the Stoughton Public Works Department, which is all new as of the last traffic study. I understand that in twenty twenty, QuickTrip was directed to not return to the Planning Commission unless issues surrounding the existing easement was worked out, apparently from what I understand, that has not been achieved. Next, the large convenience store will reduce our property values in that neighborhood, let's face it, if you have a property and the first thing that you see when you come into that neighborhood is a large convenience store that looks like every other QuickTrip, which as we know is not very attractive, that is going to be, it's going to be a black check to the neighborhood. The relocation of the QuickTrip to the Eastwood Estates area also puts the elderly from Venival at disadvantage, a lot of those people that live in those developments rely on QuickTrip for those convenience items.
You have about thirty seconds.
Thank you. There are some environmental impacts that we have a concern about, obviously emptying tanker trucks near sensitive wetlands, we need to see exactly what the, the abatement's going to look like in the event that you do have a spill. License to sell alcohol and tobacco should not be granted under any, any circumstances, given the location to the daycare centers and the residences and to sum it up, Stoughton is truly over served, over served in this community by QuickTrip. I think we have plenty of them and if anything, if you want to cite a new QuickTrip, cite it on Main Street, it's, it just doesn't serve its purpose in a residential area, thank you.
All right, next one signed up is Joshua Holt, he's signed up in opposition, is Josh here to speak? All right, I'll move on to the next one, our next one would be Ariel, is that correct?
Yeah.
I'm not going to try to pronounce everybody's names.
Hi, I'm Ariel Gunther, I'm also a resident at Eastwood Estates, I live on Stony Ridge, I am the person that did the groundwork and brought forth the information that all the residents weren't notified within three hundred feet. I wasn't a resident in twenty twenty when this first came up, so I went back and watched the videos. You know, I think, like Bob said, we, the whole neighborhood should have been notified first, so I really appreciate you guys pulling back and I, I don't know if the city will notify the entire neighborhood, but I sure will, if the city isn't going to, because I, I think that they deserve to know. And even back in twenty twenty, Mayor Swadley, you, you had pointed out that it was an opportunity, since the whole neighborhood wasn't notified, it was an opportunity to change policy and I don't see that that has happened, so I do appreciate you guys pulling it back and, and making sure everybody's notified. So, the biggest thing like Bob mentioned, in twenty twenty, at the end, the video and the meeting minutes, they do state that the motion be tabled to allow for time for the applicant and adjacent neighbors to come to an agreement on the access agreement. And again, like Bob said, that hasn't happened, nothing with the easement has changed, it takes two parties to change an easement and that hasn't happened. And if that property is sold for, to a new property owner, that easement's going to stay, stay the same, one person can't change it. I guess I, my other point was about the conditional use permit, so I guess I'll wait and hear from the attorney and then, you know, comment at the next meeting. Again, what Bob mentioned, the traffic study was done June twenty ninth, twenty twenty, but because of COVID, that study, they pulled data from two thousand eighteen, that's five years old, that's not current and plus, like Bob said, many things have changed since then on the east side. So, if the two points that the conditional use permit and if we were to get by that and we were to get by the point that the easement hasn't changed, I think it's new traffic study is for sure warranted. There's just, there's a huge danger there with people crossing over through that and I know that there was talk of a crosswalk, we all know, we all pump gas, the person at pump ten is not going to walk over to pump two to then cross through that crosswalk, that's just not reality, we all know that. The other thing was that, you know, just, I don't know how many people, how many of you are aware that all of the traffic from Eastwood Estates, from Stony Ridge Meadow and Eastwood, all exits out Stony Ridge Drive onto Cedar Brook and that QuickTrip driveway will be right there. And I know in the past, QuickTrip was asked to provide examples of a similar situation, but this is a very, very unique situation, there isn't one similar that shows traffic being, that sounds like my time's coming up.
Yeah, you got about thirty seconds.
Thank you. So, like I mentioned, I am the person that went around, I got, in one day, about three and a half hours, I got up sixty-six signatures of ninety-nine property owners, I just did one signature per household and so I think I got several more here tonight, so a vast majority of people in the Eastwood Estates do not want this QuickTrip on that corner, they're not opposed to QuickTrip in general, but not on that corner. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I appreciate your information about coming back and making sure that, that we're on record later, I do appreciate that clarification.
Sure. Next up is Amber, I believe Amber's here.
Yes, hi, I'm, can you hear me with the mask?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm Amber Cedarstrom, I have a young son enrolled at Weeble World and simply put, I do not want him breathing in toxic fumes all day, every day. A twenty eighteen study by Columbia School of Public Health in the Midwest found that gas stations release ten times the amount of emissions that were estimated in, in determining how close schools, parks can be situated to the facilities, so the environmental and public health risks of a large gas station near a daycare is enormous, not to mention to the wetlands, as was previously mentioned. There's a reason why old gas stations are considered brown sites and need special environmental cleanup before the, the sites can be reused. We also like to walk sometimes to Weeble World to pick up and drop off our son and that's difficult enough with the pedestrian passages being what they are at that intersection, but it would be exceedingly dangerous, I think, if a gas station were to go in there, so I just want to register my strong opposition to this, to this idea of a gas station. And agreement with the previous speaker that Stoughton already has many gas stations, many QuickTrips, the east side does need more services, absolutely, but a gas station and convenience store of that type, I think are not, are not what the east side most needs, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I had John Conway was in favor, is John here to speak? Okay, we'll keep moving. Next I had Lisa Byler, she was signed up in favor, I don't believe she's here to speak. Next I had, signed up was Marcos Cedarstrom, I don't see Marcus here. Opposed, then I had Nicole, is Nicole here? Nicole Monahan signed up as opposed. Marcy Ross signed up to be in favor. Next would be Jerry Judd, I believe Jerry's here.
Well, I didn't have a speech made out because I didn't know I was going to speak yet tonight again, my name is Jerry Judd, I own the fascino building and whoever else is in it. First of all, along with my building and Weeble World and my tenants in my building will have a lot of use of the easement, that easement, due to some reason, DOT wants a pork chop out there on the, next to M, for M, that way it'll be right in and right out, so no matter who goes in there or goes out, they're going to have to go down Cedar Brook Road and get out. I read an article that was written by one of them in the area, there were very, a lot of things that they were uncomfortable with the complete traffic and everything else and that's why I'm concerned, I don't know how they're going to have people getting gas or other things and then people walking across that easement, there's really no stop and go light for the people walking on that street or easement. And all, pretty much a lot of the rest of them spoke the same thing I'm in favor of, there's some that mentioned they'd like to see an easement off of, what's that one to the south, I can't think of it.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, right? Well, so far DOT has not agreed to let a easement in in that road, so that would help a lot. Again, there'll be lots and lots of trucks, there's on the average of four trucks a week that go into my building for products and stuff that fascino sells, there's a hairdresser in there that's in there every day with hair, hair equipment or hairdoings, there's another lady in there that's got a daycare center, she's got people coming and going, so is Weeble World, got people coming and going, then there's one on the other corner on the west side of N that's going to make a lot of traffic in there. I, I read that article that they had once before, that there's just too much parking lot in there, with all those big trucks, QuickTrip has probably got an average, I think they, somebody made that four days a week, depending on how much gas goes in and out of there, to come back and fill up the tanks to, for what the gas they sell and, and every one of them is in a semi, so either a semi is going to go in or go out on that Cedar Brook Road. I am definitely think that there should be somewhere else, one day when we were in town here, we drove out to east side of Stoughton and to me, I think that they should look for another place, there's all kinds of land out there that would be more suitable to that, a lot more room and a lot less traffic, so I guess that's all I can think of, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next I have Megan.
Hi, I'm Megan Prangy, I live in the neighborhood, we've been there for almost ten years now and we don't live on Stony Brook, we live on Ashbury Court, so we didn't get any notification of this going on, I agree with Ariel that the entire neighborhood needs to be notified, it's a rural area, it's all small families that live there, our daughter also does go to Weeble World and we do walk there when the weather is nice, putting in that QuickTrip would make that impossible to cross over to get to the four K building, sure, we might still get to the daycare, but not to four K. There's a bus stop that's right there where Weeble World, or where the kids get on the bus, where the QuickTrip driveway wants to come out of and that just does not seem feasible, even if they do install that crosswalk, looking at the traffic survey, QuickTrip is saying that all tractor trailers turning onto Cedar Brook are going to have to cross left of center to make that wide turn because it's not feasible for traffic going north, tractors going north on, and to make a right turn safely into the designated lane. I just don't think it's a good thing to have it there, I strongly object and we'll be back at that April meeting, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have Carol Clark. I know Carol's here.
Probably know me from the last time I fought this.
Yeah, you may want to just adjust the mic a little bit.
Yep, I'm short, you probably all know me from the last time, three years ago, when I fought this with tooth and nail, I've only lived in Stoughton for seven years now, we came here because I lived in Madison before that forty years and we wanted to come to a quiet neighborhood like I grew up in, in Iola, Scandinavia, another Norwegian. Another Norwegian town and I love it here. And, uh, but we like our quiet neighborhood and the last thing we need is to have a lot more traffic. I'm a biker. I'm a walker. I walk three to four days a week. I'm out on my bike. I go see this guy over here to have my bike fixed up and it's not safe. We've had two very close misses trying to get out of Cedar Brook. There's no bike paths here in town. I've already been caught by the police downtown because I was biking on the sidewalks and I'm supposed to be biking on the highway, except the state tells you, you're not supposed to bike on the highway. So, I don't know how you're supposed to get from that side of town to the other side. That's another problem. But, um, we've nearly gotten hit trying to go left to go out through the farm roads south of here. One lady that lives on Stony Bridge, she went across, ended up in the gravel on the other side by the cemetery trying to beat the traffic coming up that hill. I don't know how many of you that live on the west side knew about the hill coming up and to get to the stop sign. You can't see the people coming up the hill. They're supposed to be going 35. They're going more like 45 or 50 and they stop when they get to the stop sign. But that hill, they need to take the hill down to be able to do this on Cedar Brook because you can't see those. And there's going to be a car crash or a kid getting killed on a bicycle right there. So, she went across. I, I came across, couldn't get across because you're at a stop. So, you're not like tooling down the road. You're at a stop, at the stop sign by Cedar Brook. I was in the lane going north. That's where I ended up. Luckily, there wasn't a car coming from me going north because a guy went whizzing by me down towards the stop sign up from the hill. That's the two no, things that I know about with QuickTrip. That it would be even worse with all the vehicles turning to go out of QuickTrip. Let's see, and, and the Ashbury group, if they can't, if they get all lined up there after they're having their coffee, I'd QuickTrip picking that up in the morning when it's the worst time of the day. If they can't get out that way to get back to Madison, they're going to go the other way and down your street on Ashbury. And that's, that's a residential street. What else here? I got a list. Most of the things they've addressed. I also researched, I'm a school, I was a school nurse in Madison. I researched that also. And the air quality is a huge problem. The gas fumes for, especially for those really little kids under three, which is the building right by where QuickTrip's going to build. Their little lungs aren't, aren't equipped to take fumes. And that, that's all that's going to be coming from that. The gas fumes are really toxic to children as far as asthma, any kind of respiratory kind of problem. And all our neighborhood kids, they can't get to Kaganza. They can't walk or bike there because you have to get across. There's no crossing guard. There's no lights like you have for the Venevo people now to get across from Venevo to pick up their little sandwiches across the street. I've talked to people down there. That's part of my walk actually is to go through that neighborhood. And they say, "We're not going, we can't get all the way down there and we're not going to walk through that intersection where those left turn people just about run you down at the intersection." Because they, they're trying to make their left turn to go on the Speedway that N is. The traffic on N in the seven years, the seven years we've lived there has increased dramatically. And I, I also agree with that traffic study being done. Those, they're lined up through several lights there trying to make a left turn to go to Madison. They don't want to go on 51. That's a curvy road that's had lots of accidents. It's going to be revised in 25. So, during the time the construction's going on on 51, we're really going to have traffic problems on N. Because everybody to get to Madison, they're all going to be coming over there. And if they don't come down Main Street to turn on N, they'll go down 51, turn unbeat. That's all I.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next up was Maggie.
Hi, my name is Maggie Hamel. I'm the owner of the three Weeble World Centers in Stoughton, right in this neighborhood. Um, I was at the meetings as well in, in 2020 in opposition of the QuickTrip going in for a number of reasons and longer than my three minutes would allot for. Luckily, you've had a lot of good points made already tonight regarding emissions, pollution, um, traffic concerns. My main concern is always the children, their safety. Um, when we've got little ones, some parents getting three kids out to the car at once. One's running right aside of car, one's standing on the sidewalk waiting to get into the car at drop off and pickup. That happens twice a day. Um, and cars are already coming in, the traffic. And you can't tell me, even though QuickTrip's going to have a driveway on Cedar Brook, that there's not going to be cars going in our driveway, in and out at these busy times. Mostly because if, if QuickTrip's getting semi deliveries and there's a semi blocking the drive, cars are going to find other paths, other ways to go. Not to mention there are two, not just one, but two bus stops on Cedar Brook, right where that drive's going to be. We wait out there every morning with our elementary kids that go to Kaganza. And then in the afternoon, we wait out on the other side of the street for the buses to drop off. These are major concerns. And additionally, we pick up the kids coming from Kaganza and walk them to our new facility. We worked with the city and worked with the fire department in making sure our route was the safest possible to get to our clubhouse. Um, and we've got that all worked out. And now, um, we have major concerns about the logistics of getting our students safely from the bus stop to our new facilities. I would additionally like to point out, I'm not anti-business. I've owned a business in Stoughton for the last 16 years. I love Stoughton and I love, I'm very appreciative of all the support we've had over the years. I did try to buy these lots, uh, or lease one of them from Mark. If this, if this does not go through, Mark, um, I'm still interested. I've got a lot of ideas. But my main concern is, is the safety of the children. So, um, and that's why I'm here and that's why I will be back in April as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Rose Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council, for letting, letting us speak. Um, I've only lived in Stoughton about four and a half years. I was brought up here by my, for my families. And, um, my biggest concern with everything that's been said thus far is really for the children in the neighborhood. There are several families on Cedar Brook and on the corner of Stony Brook who have young children. So, I did some medical research and I found that from the ages of 10 to 18 is when children's lungs are being developed. We have three bus, we have three bus stops for the junior high, the senior high and the elementary school on the, uh, right where, uh, the, the gas station's driveway is supposed to be. So, that means children waiting for the bus are going to be exposed to fumes. Now, the fumes from the diesel is mostly nitrous oxide, but the particulate matter gets deposited in the bases of the lungs and can affect children for the rest of their lives. We're talking about a health impact that we are morally and ethically have to consider when we're putting in a gas station. The cars emit sulfur dioxide, carbon monoxide, as well as the nitrous oxide. So, we're talking about chemical pollutants. And just because it's been done in other areas, doesn't mean it's morally or ethically correct to do in our area. Some states have made laws limiting the exposure of children to these toxins by not allowing gas stations near schools, daycares. And I think we need to consider our community because these children could be condemned to a lifetime of serious disease. And I have the papers, I gave a copy of the papers to Mayor Swadley and I would be happy to present them as well as other papers for the next meeting. But I would really ask you to consider the health of our children. Yes, ingress and egress to, uh, Stony Ridge Meadow, um, would be impaired. And in my case, I, I want to worry about an ambulance coming to get me if I have, if I get sick. And it doesn't seem like it's going to be an easy proposition getting an ambulance or a fire engine into a one-exit community. And I have trouble getting in and out of my, my driveway on Stony Bridge. And I'm down the edge of, the end of Stony Bridge. So, I can't imagine the increase in traffic that will occur with, with a gas station and a driveway right there. I would ask you all to reconsider for the health of our children and the potential risks for, for those of us who, who are adults. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, did I miss anybody? Great. All right, thank you all for being here and then we'll have, um, some discussion here as, as the meeting goes on. Next item on the agenda is communications and presentations. Are there any communications from council members? President Hirsch.
First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and hosting your.
Having a hard time hearing Regina.
Okay, is that better?
Hmm.
I don't know what to do.
No.
No? Is there a microphone?
Not yet. No.
All right, there's something wrong with our modern room mic. How about now?
There we go.
Okay. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight and, you know, stating whether you're for or against, you know, all this information is good for us. And hope to see you all on, uh, April 11th, uh, for the public hearing. But my actual, my communication tonight is actually for a city council, uh, to remind you of the committee of the whole meeting this Thursday at 6:00 in here. We'd really like everybody to be here in person because it kind of really, we, we need to discuss a lot of things. And it's really hard to do that when some people are online and some people are. I mean, the two issues up that we're going to be covering are the ARPAPHONS and the new, you know, um, change in ordinance with respect to liquor license or whatever bartender license. I can't remember what it's called. Operator license. I knew there was a word that I was, and so I'd really, if you can, please come in person. And I know some people are still, with COVID, you can sit in the back of the room. It'd just be nice to have people all present for that because it's, it's really important that we have good discussions and get things done. So, um, look at your packets, come prepared. I gave you a sample way to start looking at different costs, start playing around with it so we can start Thursday off with, you know, good discussions on what everybody thinks is appropriate as opposed to trying to do that during the meeting. So, thank you.
Are there communications from other council members? Alder Person Legaki.
Just a question in response to, um, our, our speakers tonight. They provided some interesting health information that caught my attention. When I'm not in Alder, I'm, I care about health as well. And so, um, I'd be curious in getting access to those links and/or the information that was shared with the mayor.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pass them on to the clerk and then the clerk will scan and email them to all of you.
Well, and, and I'll have something to say about building a record, um, associated with the decision-making process when I give my talk later.
All right. Any other communications from council members? All right, I have a few. Um, let me just find them. All right, the first one is, I have a proclamation. This would be the first annual Spread Goodness Day. So, whereas the idea of Spread Goodness Day was created in 2017 to inspire a global day of simple goodness by encouraging individuals, schools and organizations to show the explosive power that one act of goodness multiplied by hundreds, thousands and maybe millions has changed the world every single day. And whereas in 2017, the launch was created as a global goodness day initiative headquartered in Marquette, Michigan. And whereas people of across the nation have rose up to create impactful special goodness days, events and initiatives, a day that individuals, businesses and schools committed to doing good things, celebrating goodness explosively together, and a day that proves that one action can change the world. And whereas Michigan resident Anna Dravland founded the nonprofit event after experiencing the positive effects of engagement with her community, volunteerism and so, social actions. And whereas on the second Friday of March, we should honor the power and simplicity of goodness to change the world and positive, positively impact our community. Now, therefore, I may, my mayor, Tim Swadley, do hereby proclaim the second Friday of the month as Special Goodness Day in Stoughton to uplift our city and inspire the world with acts of goodness. So, the first, uh, one will be on March 10th. And I know there's some community members that are really excited about the opportunity to spread goodness here in Stoughton. The other communication I have is, um, the Park and Recreation Department is going to be doing a, uh, public information meeting on March 6th regarding the Virgin Lake Trail. And I want to make sure that, uh, folks had that on their calendar. And I believe, uh, Dan Lynn will be leading that conversation. Any communications from council members before we get into our agenda? All right, hearing none. Uh, that takes us to our consent agenda. And it looks like we have a few items in there. I would entertain a motion, um, to approve the consent agenda. I so move. There's a motion by Jensen. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Legaki. Um, would anybody like anything acted on separately on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Uh, that takes us to old business and that would be ordinance 3. And that one is coming from the, um, Public Works for a second reading. And that would be Alder Mieski.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is ordinance 3 of 2023, amending sections 66-904, parent 8 of the municipal, of the Stoughton Municipal Code, Stormwater Basin Aesthetics. This was recommended for approval on a six to zero vote on January 19th. Since the first reading, we have modified the, um, the language somewhat with, from suggestions from the public. And we are still asking to move forward with this ordinance. And I so move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Oh, second?
Take your pick, Mayor.
All right, um, I heard President Hirsch. Uh, Alder Person Mieski.
I'm sorry?
Uh, do you want to go through this anymore or?
Uh, no, it's, it's basically, it's the same as it was originally. What was asked for was suggestions by some of the developers on how to strengthen the ordinance, but also to allow for, uh, objectives to be met at the 200-year flood. And they also suggested, uh, language for, um, for landscaping, which was not originally included, which we wholeheartedly agree with.
All right.
If I, if I can just add something, um, Mayor.
Sure, go ahead, Director Shill.
I was just going to remind the group, the Public Works Committee actually was looking to have this come back to their committee. This doesn't actually represent the, the modified language that was discussed at the committee after the first reading. So, um, if there's, if there's an opportunity to, to consider tableing it until then, I think you might still incorporate that language that was discussed and proposed to be modified slightly before it came back to council.
I would agree with that. Um, I thought that the language would have been in the new packet here, but it, it haven't gotten that far. So, you could revisit it next, at the next meeting.
Okay, so I would be looking for a motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone.
Second.
By Schumacher, a second by Reeves. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any, any opposed? That motion carries. All right, so we'll bring that one back when it's ready. Next item is R 24 of 2023. This one comes from the Plant Commission. Alder Person Caravelo.
Uh, yes, thank you. This is R 24 of 2023, except I'm noticing that there is a mistake here. Or maybe there's not a mistake. Actually, on the, on the document, on the resolution. Actually, on the, on the document, on the resolution, it says R 23, but on the notice, it says R 24 of 2023.
Oh.
How should we tackle that?
No, the next one is correct. This is the only one that's mis-marked.
This is the only one?
So this should be 24 or 23?
Should be 24.
Yep, this should be 24.
So just fix in the header.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so this is R 24 of 2023, approving a certified survey map for a lot line adjustment at 2,42408 Markens Gate, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Schumacher. Alder Person Caravelo.
And this request is simply a proposal to adjust the lot line by nine feet to create a slightly larger parcel at that address.
All right. Anything you want to add, Director Shiel?
Yeah, there was an additional easement that was placed on the westernmost lot to accommodate a storm, stormwater area. So that's the reason they're seeking to have a slightly, uh, the lot line adjusted to accommodate that better.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Uh, next item also came from the Plan Commission, R 25.
And this one is R 25 of 2023, approving an extraterritorial jurisdictional land division for property located at 1343 Star School Road, Town of Rutland, Dane County, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Hunt, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is a proposal to create two single-family parcels and separate the adjacent agricultural or currently attached agricultural land.
All right. Anything you want to add, Director Shiel?
No, there's a little hamlet of residential properties here that this would be an infill to that area along Star School Road.
All right. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, thank you. Um, next item is one that many are been waiting for, and this is R 26 of 2023. And this one also came from the Plan Commission.
And let's get this one up. Um, yes, R 26.
It's up to you guys.
2023, approving a conditional use permit request by QuickTrip for an in-vehicle sales and service use, including outdoor display incidental to an indoor sales at 1700 East Main Street, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right, second by Alder Person Hunt. Um, Alder Person Caravelo.
So, considering the notification that happened, do we just table this, or?
I think what we want to do is we want to walk through kind of where we're at, where we think we should go, but ultimately it's up to the city council. And I think, um, I think Director Shiel kind of want to start out and at least walk through what happened with the public notice so everybody knows what happened and then what we're going to do to correct it. And then after we finish that part of the conversation, then Attorney Dragney can go through his presentation and talk about the process and the conditional use permit law. And then at that point, then the council, you know, can figure out what they would like to do. So it looks like Rodney has it on the screen right now, so the floor is yours, Director Shiel.
Sure. So we utilize the Dane County GIS system to create our mailing list. What we do is we create a 300-foot yard, or 300-foot buffer around the subject properties. You can see that is down here, it highlights the properties, and then you actually download the mailing list. And that's the process that we used. Um, unfortunately, the Dane County database did not accommodate these, the buildings shown on the far east side of this site, which is actually two condominium, or two condominium buildings. There's one six-unit, one eight-unit building on this parcel, and it only gave us the ownership information for one. Subsequent to this, we found out that the county has identified this as a glitch in their system that they were unaware of, but they are working the remedy of that. So these are the prop, this particular property, the additional 12 units, or the additional 13 units, did not get a direct mailing. The notice was published in the newspaper, and additionally, as the mayor said, our policy indicates a direct mailing, um, policy of 300 feet within a subject site. That was what was attempted to be done. When it was discovered, these 12 property owners, 13 property owners on this site were not directly mailed a notice. The staff made the recommendation to have another public hearing, as was previously suggested jointly with the Plan Commission and Council at the April 11th meeting.
All right, thank you. And just to be clear, um, it, it's a policy, and, you know, the council could choose by a two-thirds vote to waive the policy. We're not here to recommend that, but you certainly would have that option if you wanted to pursue it. So I just wanted you to kind of understand that. The policy itself, if that's something that you want to take up at another meeting, you can let us know because I think that would be a separate process than what we're going through here if you think we should, you know, do something with the, you know, the radius. So we're here right now to ask any questions about, about the notice before we have Matt go into his presentation. Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. So how do you want to do this, Matt? I, I know you, you have a presentation, but I don't know if you want to verbalize it, or if you want to PowerPoint it, or how you want to handle it.
Um, I'm certainly going to walk through it verbally.
Okay.
Candy, are you able to, uh, put the PowerPoint on the screen? It might help people get a better understanding of the material if we could.
I can run that if you'd like, Matt.
That'd be great, appreciate it.
And Rodney, I decided to start from the beginning just because if I don't, there's some context that might be lost here. Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
Um, so this is a presentation I made to the Plan Commission in March of 2020, you may recall. That's right before the lockdown happened. That was my last in-person meeting with the Plan Commission, actually. And, and this is a conversation, this, the, the discussion we're going to have tonight is, involves a conversation that I've been having with my clients since about 2017 because there were significant changes in the law that occurred in 2017 that affect conditional use permit decisions. And I think you're going to see as a result of my discussion tonight, on my presentation tonight, that it's difficult, it's complicated, that where we are with the law today puts us in a, in a difficult position to try and navigate. And I'm glad people are here so they can, because there's important information for, I guess, the public to hear too about, about this process. So, starting with the next page, Rodney. So, before 2017, for many years, conditional use permits were used in zoning codes as flexible tools to give communities the opportunity to identify a use as a conditional use and then allow a judgment to be made in particular cases about particular proposed conditional uses at particular locations. And, um, and, uh, and I'm not going to say a lot more about the history other than to say that, um, communities were given a fair degree of, I would say, latitude in terms of making judgments about conditional use, about conditional uses. In, in a decision that's referred to here as the All Energy Corporation versus Tremple Oak County Environmental Land Use Law Committee case, that, that decision kind of set the, in motion, some changes in the law that, that we're going to talk about tonight. This was a case involving proposed frac sand mine in Tremple Oak County. And, and that particular use was identified as a conditional use in the county's zoning code. And there was a considerable local concern and opposition to this proposed frac sand mine. There was a public hearing. Quite a few people spoke in opposition to the operation, characterizing it as something that, you know, would be detrimental to the, to the surrounding area. And the committee in that case, um, denied the application for approval. And that denial was then challenged by the applicant and litigated all the way up to the Wisconsin Supreme Court. And in a split decision, um, the Supreme Court sustained the denial of the conditional use permit and found that the committee acted within its authority. There was a dissenting opinion issued in that case that articulated a number of concerns about how, about the majority decision and expressed a contrary view about how conditional use permits should be handled. So if we could go to the next page, Rodney. The dissenting opinion talked about what, the nature of a conditional use. And as I said in, before Act 67, municipalities had fairly wide discretion when evaluating a conditional use permit application. The dissent in that case said, no, conditional use should be treated more like a permitted use. And, um, the language from the case, from the dissenting opinion, said that conditional use is not a loose end. It is, in fact, it is a determination that the identified use is compatible with the zoning district and is subject only to appropriate conditions to control for the potentially hazardous aspects of the specific proposal under consideration. The dissent went on to say, to evaluate the limited circumstances for denying a conditional use permit. The dissent said, "This places substantial limitations on the reasons a municipality can give for denying a conditional use permit. Because the types of uses identified as conditional uses are sanctioned and either desirable or necessary to the community based on the fact that they are allowable as conditional uses, an application for such a use may not be denied because the owner proposes to engage in that type of use. Such objections are in order when the municipality adopts or amends its zoning ordinance and considers which conditional uses, if any, to include in each of its zoning districts."
Sounds like a lot of lawyer talk to me.
It is, uh, it is called Supreme Court talk. And, and basically what he was saying is, when the community makes a legislative decision about what uses are permitted or conditional, it's making a decision about what is an appropriate use. And if something is identified as, basically what he said in that case is, look, the zoning code said frac sand mining is allowed. It's, it's allowed as a conditional use, but it's allowed. And in this case, the community said no because it's frac sand mining. So he found that objectionable. He said it needs to be a more focused kind of evaluation on potential negative impacts rather than just taking another kick at the cat in terms of the legislative decision. And so then this dissenting opinion took a similarly restrictive view of municipal authority to create subjective and ambiguous ordinance standards that a CUP applicant must satisfy to earn a conditional use permit. He said, for example, "The whole point of requiring a set of knowable standards is to limit the basis on which the county may deny a permit. Our job is to determine whether the committee properly measured All Energy's specific proposal against knowable and certain standards, and then determined whether the imposition of appropriate conditions would allow implementation of the proposal while simultaneously protecting the public's legitimate interests." And the All Energy dissent argued that once a government establishes a conditional use in a zoning district, it determines that the use is consistent for that area. And then the question becomes what standards and conditions the municipality may impose to protect against negative externalities. So that was the dissenting opinion in that case. So he didn't, the rest of the court didn't agree with him. But the legislature did and adopted a new, a new law after that decision, 2017 Wisconsin Act 67. And, so what does that statute say? Sorry, I gotta... Rodney, I'm sorry, uh, I'm on, uh... There you go. Let's go to one page beyond that. So, first, uh, key points of this new legislation. One, statute says that if, if an applicant for a conditional use permit meets or agrees to meet all of the requirements and conditions specified in the city ordinance or those imposed by the city zoning board, the city shall grant the conditional use permit. And this appears to follow the logic of the All Energy dissent. Next page, please. The statute says that conditional use permit requirements and conditions must be reasonable and, to the extent practicable, measurable, suggesting that standards based on general public health and welfare could be subject to potential legal challenge. Next, um, as I see it, the Act's language coupled with its legislative history implies a somewhat limited place for broadly stated public health, safety, and general welfare requirements in conditional use permit ordinance standards. There's some definite lawyer talk here. The original bill said that the requirements and conditions must be reasonable and measurable. The final language said that the standards must be reasonable and, to the extent practicable, measurable, as opposed to only measurable. So suggesting that there still remains a small window for municipalities to use public health, safety, and general welfare-type standards. But the exact scope of what is within your authority is still yet to be determined. We do not have yet any case law interpreting the statute to really help us nail that down. Next page, please. The statute also now, well, it, the statute says that substantial evidence is required for conditional use permit decisions. That was the standard before, uh, this new legislation, but, and it remains the standard, but there are a couple of new elements to this. So, next page, please. One thing that is now expressly stated in the statute is that, that substantial evidence has been redefined to specifically limit the use of personal preferences or speculation to reach a decision. So it means substantial evidence means facts and information other than merely personal preferences or speculation directly pertaining to the requirements and conditions an applicant must meet to obtain a conditional use permit, and that a reasonable person would accept in support of a conclusion. So just to give you a few examples, you, there are, there, there are some folks who tonight expressed certain opinions, such as, you know, this community doesn't need another QuickTrip, we have enough QuickTrips. That would not be the kind of evidence that would support a decision here. That's an opinion about whether the city needs something or doesn't need something. It's not evidence about a particular impact that this use would have that's correlated to a standard in the ordinance. So that's just an example, and I think it's helpful for people to understand the difference here. So if your, if your opposition to this is based on the idea, we don't need another QuickTrip, that's not really something that the council could make a decision based on.
Matt, on the other side.
Yep.
There was a number of people that brought up health concerns next to Weevil World and the daycare, and there is some science, apparently there's scientific literature out there. Would that then be used as the public health and safety part that was in your last statement?
Yes, so, and this is, I, I, I'm glad you asked that question and people should listen. So, the council has the right to base its decision on substantial evidence. So if there is, in fact, evidence that is more than just personal opinion about something. So if someone said, for example, in my opinion, um, you know, a gas station is harmful because there's gas fumes, that's probably not enough. But I did hear people referencing studies that have been done, research that's available. So if that kind of information is made available to the council and you look at it and determine that in fact, it is... that, in fact, it is evidence that a reasonable person could rely on in reaching conclusions about impacts, then that is something you could consider, as long as we can tie it back to a standard in your ordinance. And we'll talk about that a little bit at the end. Another thing I'll just mention, you know, a fact that a large number of people oppose a project, that's not really relevant. It's not a popularity contest. It's not about how many people are in favor or how many people are against. It has to be based on evidence tied to the standards in our ordinance. Let's see. So as I, yeah, it's not to say that public hearing testimony is irrelevant. Of course, it is relevant. We're legally required to have a public hearing, and the public testimony is critical to decision-making on this kind of thing. In fact, the way the process works, it's kind of an unusual, difficult thing, because it's, it's a quasi-judicial decision that the council's asked to make, not a legislative decision. And in order for you to make a quasi-judicial decision, you have to hear all the competing information. Well, the applicant is going to present information to support the applicant's application. And in many cases, the only other source of information you will have will be the public. Or if you decide that you want to retain your own experts to look at something, I suppose you could do that. But we rarely see that in zoning cases. I mean, at least in the first instance, you typically rely on the public to present concerns and present information at a public hearing. Next page, please. Okay. So I'm, as I understand the statute today, substantial evidence is required to be shown at three important stages of the process. The first, next page, please. So I think the initial burden of proof is on the applicant to show that they, that their proposal is one that would meet the standards in the ordinance. So they have the initial kind of burden of proof, shall we say. Next page, please. Next, the decision itself. The decision the city makes to approve or deny the permit has to be supported by evidence that, that is in the record. And that was, that was always the law. And then next, any terms or conditions that are imposed on the applicant must relate to the purpose of the ordinance and must also be based on substantial evidence. So this is, is somewhat new. This is new under the statute. It is, in some cases, a community will approve a conditional use permit but attach conditions to that approval and say, well, we'll approve you, but you have to meet condition A or B or C. I believe now that if you're going to do that, there needs to be evidence that supports the conclusion that that condition is reasonably necessary to make sure that the use meets the standards in the ordinance. You have to tie that condition back to your ordinance standard. I think we're going to stop there because this next part of the presentation really goes into how the city might choose in the future to change its zoning code to do things differently. And I did have a discussion with that at the Plan Commission in 2020. Be happy to have a discussion with you all, but it gets beyond where we are tonight. What we have today is, we have an application based on the current zoning ordinance, based on the current process, based on current law. So we have to operate within what we have today. Just a couple more things to say then. So what is the legal standard and what is the record that contains this evidence that I've been talking about? Okay? So the legal standard in the city's current zoning code, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm going to go from memory, and Rodney will tell me if I get it wrong. But it, it says that the standard requires that the use not create undesirable impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, or on the environment, or on the community as a whole. That's what the ordinance says today, undesirable impacts. It doesn't say what those are. So let's talk a little bit more about what that might mean. But before I do that, let's also talk about what is the proposed conditional use here? So as I understand it, the, what's proposed that requires conditional use approval are the, the gas pumps, you know, the gas pumps outside, and the car wash. If they had a store that didn't have the gas pumps or the car wash, they wouldn't need a conditional use permit for that because that's already a permitted use. It's just the gas pumps and the car wash.
In the ordinance, I think we call it like inside?
It's called in-vehicle sales and service incidental to indoor sales. So a couple more things about that. I heard some folks tonight express concerns about, you know, well, they're going to sell alcohol and tobacco. That's really not relevant to this. That's, they're not looking for a conditional use permit to sell alcohol and tobacco. That's a permitted use from a zoning standpoint. They would need a license, an alcohol license, that's a separate issue, but that's not really relevant to the zoning decision. I'll mention a couple of other things. This didn't come up tonight. I don't know if it's come up at all, but, for example, lighting. What if someone expressed concerns about lighting impacts? You know, well, the lighting is going to be a problem for neighboring property. Well, we have lighting standards in the zoning ordinance. So if what the, what the plan proposes conforms to the lighting standards in the code, I think it would be difficult to defend a denial based on lighting. If they meet the lighting, then that would be hard to say, well, we're going to turn you down based on that.
The other one that came up with some of the emails were noise.
Noise is a challenge, too, because the, the noise standards that we have in the zoning code are prospective in, in application. It's not like, with, with lighting, we can, we can get a photometric plan, and we can see what are the light impacts before they build anything. With noise, that's something you have to look at later and, and measure later to see, well, are the noise standards being met or not? Noise is a difficult one. And so I'm not here to say noise is irrelevant tonight, but noise is difficult to, to assess and to use. The one thing I did hear, so I heard concerns about, about health relating to gas fumes or diesel fumes, things of that nature. That may be something that you could base a decision on if you have evidence to support the decision that this proposed use would create those kinds of impacts, that they do, in fact, present a public health risk, and, and that they can't be managed through appropriate conditions. So there may be a basis for a decision there. I am reminded somewhat of that all-energy decision where the dissenting opinion said, well, you're turning, you're turning it down because it's a frac sand mine, and you allow frac sand mines as a conditional use. So here, it's like, well, are you turning it down because it's a gas station, and you allow gas stations as a conditional use? But I would say, where I sit tonight, is the law is still, in my mind, not entirely clear about exactly how a court would deal with a decision on that basis. If there is substantial evidence in the record to support the decision, and you can show that that's a negative impact that is real based on substantial evidence, and that's the basis for your decision, you know, that may well be defensible. But as I maybe made clear, the law in this area is new, evolving. We don't have case law, and it's somewhat difficult. What I would say to the public is, again, the, the key is to have evidence related to real impacts that council has the right to rely on. And so, and I would say, if you're really concerned about this, probably better not to simply come and say, well, you're aware that a study's been done that shows something. Bring the study. Make copies available at the hearing so that council has it, and it can be included in the record. What is the record of the evidence? So if there were ever a legal challenge to the decision that was made here, that would be important. What is the record that the city was allowed to base its decision on? And I think the clearest thing that we can point to is the information that the council and the Plan Commission take in during the public hearings. So there was a public hearing before the Plan Commission. That record exists today and is available to the council today. There's going to be another public hearing, and testimony that is presented at that hearing will be part of the record. Other forms of evidence that is submitted to the council during that hearing, such as studies that you're aware of, that you think the council ought to rely on, can be included in the record. I would suggest that we will make sure that they are documented and maintained by the clerk and made available to the council. But that's the record, and that's, so, does this sound a little like a trial? Yes, because it is a little like a trial. It's a quasi-judicial determination. This is not like what the city council does 95% of the time, which is make legislative policy decisions, where it doesn't need this kind of process and it doesn't need this kind of record. But on something like this, it does. So with that, I will stop and, well, say one more thing. So probably goes without saying that I think the staff's recommendation is that the council should refer this matter back to the Plan Commission for another public hearing. There was some thought that it should be a joint public hearing so that you all can hear the same evidence at the same meeting, and I would concur with that recommendation.
The other thing I'll just add that we would do is, we would take the evidence from the last, actually, it was two Plan Commission meetings ago. So you had the presentation, you had the public hearing. We have those on videotape, so we can send that out to council members so they have that evidence, you know, to work with, as well as whatever else you would hear at the next public hearing, which we're recommending would be April 11th. And that's really the first time we can have it where we can give proper notice for the public hearing, as well as make sure that all the parties that want to speak to the matter are available. So that's, that's why we made the recommendation for April 11th. Initially, we were hoping for March 28th, but some of the participants weren't going to be available, including Director Schiel. So we decided to push it off until that first council meeting in April. Alder Person Jensen, you had your hand up.
Yes, a quick question for you, Matt. One of the other things that was brought up by the public is the traffic study, at the age of the traffic study, is that going to be relevant?
Yeah. I'm not sure, because I'm not sure yet what the traffic impacts are that one would be concerned about, where the council would say, we need evidence that this either is not going to be a problem or is going to be a problem. If you have a traffic, I've heard that there is a traffic study that was done back in 2020 or 2021?
2020, and I believe the date was also older than that, 2018, I think.
Yeah, I think Rodney can maybe speak to that.
And, and I'll certainly let Rodney do that. I guess my only comment at this point would be, the traffic study itself, I think, would certainly be something that would be, that would be part of the record and that you could consider. If there is evidence that that study is flawed, or for some reason out of date, you'd be allowed to consider that, too. But ultimately, if there's a decision that's traffic-based, there'd be a need to try and articulate, well, what is the traffic-related problem here that has, that, that, that needs to be addressed?
Okay. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Alder Person, go ahead.
I was wondering, at the next public hearing, would it be possible to get a representative from the Department of Transportation to be present, so that if there are questions about, you know, putting in stoplights or, or adding a bike path or pedestrian crossings, there'd be someone from the DOT that could address some of their requirements on that? And then one of the folks that spoke earlier mentioned you can't have a one-party change in an easement, and that made me wonder, who would be the second party if the city is, or the owner of the property was the first party? I didn't quite understand that.
All right.
So I think, I think the easement is still remaining.
Okay.
They're proposing to add additional easements.
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't know if you want to get into that now, but I can show it on my screen, what the, what the CSM, it's in your packet for the next item, but that would be recommended to be tabled. But this shows kind of easement configuration that's being proposed across and through this site. The one that runs east to west across the site is, is in essence, the one that's currently in place.
Mm-hmm.
And the additional cross-hatched areas are additional easements to allow for access to and through the site.
Okay. I guess, I had seen that, and I recognize that that's a change to the existing circumstances. Who, if the speaker that made a statement at the beginning of our meeting, if they're correct, they were saying that an easement or an easement change would require the agreement of two parties? Is that your understanding? And if so, who's the first and who's the second party? I'm not sure, I don't understand that very well.
Well, I can speak to that from a legal standpoint. So an easement is an interest in land granted in favor of either another parcel of land, in which case it's called an easement appertinent to that land, or to another entity or person, in which case it's called an easement engrossed. So the parties, the two parties to an easement would be, one party would be the owner of the land by which the, that the easement impacts. So the land over which the easement, you know, is located, that would be one party. The other party to the easement would be either the owner of the other land that is benefited by the easement, or the other individual person or entity that has a right to use the easement. And, and I think it is fair to say that there are always going to be at least those kind of two players involved in an easement.
So if you're affording a new easement to the parties that are impacted, such as the Fastenal Building and the Weevil World, and it would be to their benefit to have that easement, are they in a position to object to that easement?
Yeah, so that's interesting. So I guess the question is, could the owner of this parcel say, well, I'm going to give my neighbor another easement that they don't want? Or could they object to that? It seems to me, I'm not 100% certain of this, but as a general rule, I think you, you would need the agreement of the other party to have a legally binding conveyance of an easement. They would need to accept the conveyance. You know, if I wanted to give Alder Person Caravelo my house, you know, he'd have to accept that. I couldn't just give it to him unilaterally, I think.
Congratulations, Phil.
And, and if the, if your house is not satisfactory to me, I can say, thanks, Matt, but I don't want your house.
Correct.
And so if the change to the easement, or adding additional easements, is still not satisfactory to me, in this case, I can say, still don't like it, no thanks.
I don't accept the conveyance of that easement. That seems right to me, and I'll, I'll have to confess, I really am not familiar with the history of the easements, what's going on with the easements, so I don't know what's going on there. But if the concern is, hey, they're trying to say that they're conveying an easement to someone. to someone, but that, but that party is not accepting that easement, you know, it sounds like that, there may be something to that.
Did you have any others, Fred?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, I think Alder Person Raff was next and then we have a couple in the room after that.
So maybe, maybe, hopefully these can be focused and easily answered, but it's more, I don't have a lot of the backstory. So currently, someone owns the land and together with, how is it currently zoned? Like this land is zoned as what?
Commercial.
Business. And like, is it business and conditional use business? Is that a separate zoning category?
Yes. No, the conditional use is, it's a, it's zoned as certain zoning, I believe it's planned business. Conditional uses within that district are what, are being sought because those are listed as conditional uses within this zoning district.
And previously cities, prior to the case in which Mr. Dregney was discussing, previously cities used conditional use permit type language in business districts to sort of maintain like some level of control over what comes in and what comes out? Is that correct?
I would say it's true under prior law and current law. I think the difference is that before that all energy case and before the statute changed, courts were more open to allowing decision makers to make decisions that were responsive to public concerns and afforded more discretion to that process. The all energy dissent and the legislative change, as I understand them, were designed to try and tie the decision makers' hands more closely to define standards and evidence that would be presented in the record and to not allow communities to base decisions on, you know, community opposition to the project, shall we say.
And so the way that this got here is QuickTrip contacted the owner of this property and was like, we want to join together and do this by the land. And that is why the conditional use permit was like requested or filed, right? Basically?
Well, I mean, QuickTrip would like to build a gas station with a, with a car wash on this site and they can't do that without a conditional use approval.
Right.
I don't, I don't know if they own the land or not.
So the, I guess what I'm, and then the last question is basically the reason that like, for instance, Weeble World wouldn't come here prior to putting in a Weeble World on a similar type property is what? Like the what, like that this one specifically, like a QuickTrip gas station, that this type of property or business has to have this sort of community discussion whereas Kicks Unlimited and Weeble World don't?
No, we actually talked about them.
Well, I'm speculating about Weeble World because I'm not sure what it, I'm guessing that it's a permitted use. So there, in zoning, in zoning codes, we have permitted uses, permitted as a matter of right without any further discussion and conditional uses where you need approval and where, yeah.
So Matt, the reason why it's a conditional use, because QuickTrip is actually a business, but because they have the pumps and the car wash, those are the new conditions. If they didn't have the pumps and the car wash, it'd be a no brainer. But because they have the pumps and the car wash, because you're doing sales at the pump or sales at the car wash as opposed to walking into the store, that's actually the conditional use.
Correct. That's what is triggering the need for conditional use approval.
So any evidence that we have in whatever subsequent hearing we have, like a traffic study or a health impact, would have to relate exclusively to the purpose for the conditional use, which would be the outdoor pumps and the car wash as opposed to, this is how many cars would be here even if it was a convenience store without the outside pumps, correct?
That's a very interesting question. I'm not sure how to answer it, honestly, because, you know, so if the question is, well, would you only be allowed to consider the incremental increase in traffic if you went from a QuickTrip with no gas station pumps, you know, a convenience store that has no gas versus a convenience store that has gas, I'm not sure how to answer that, honestly.
Well, but the pumps and the car wash are the conditional use, that's why there's conditional use. That's what's triggering the public hearing is those two things. I think that's what Frank, you were talking about, those two things. And so if we're, if we don't want to agree with the conditional use, those are the evidence that needs to be talked about.
Yes.
And so I think that's what Frank is trying to say and that's what I, I agree with you.
Well, I think I heard Frank ask something slightly different, but maybe I, maybe I'm wrong.
He's parsing out the traffic that are only there because of the gas or only there because of the car wash.
Right. And I'm not sure that you would have to take that kind of a scalpel to it. It may be that you would be allowed to consider the traffic associated with the use as a whole that includes the, because it's, it, the zoning code defines it as in-vehicle sales and service incidental to indoor sales. So you might be able to say, we can look at the whole use, including the convenience store and the pumps as it relates to traffic, okay? But I don't, I think the door is closed with respect to, you know, we can look at what you're selling in the store, you know, like alcohol and tobacco. Because the traffic component, I, I don't know. It's a, it's a difficult question. I'm honestly, I'm not sure what, what the right answer is.
Can I ask one more question and then I'm done?
Yep. Go ahead, Frank.
The carefulness with which we like proceed in this scenario and the basis for which I'm sure you're warning us about the all energy case prior to us making a decision is so that we don't make a decision that then prompts QuickTrip, right, to sue us or to, to try to fight the decision by the city and put the QuickTrip there anyway. So I'm wondering if you or if we have any information regarding whether QuickTrip would be or has a tendency to be litigious in similar situations or if there's not a separate sort of like negotiation that may or may not be able to happen, which is like, hey, QuickTrip, we like you, you got, get four of you in our town, but this particular neighborhood is opposed for these specific reasons. Is there not some other arrangement we can come to?
Okay, so let's talk about both of those. First, likelihood of litigation, so on. I'm not really, I'm not in a position to speak to that. I think without regard to who they are and whether they're litigious, I want you to understand what the legal framework is that you're dealing with to put you in the best possible position to make a good decision that we can defend. That being said, I mean, QuickTrip has always been reasonable to deal with, at least in my encounters with them, and I'm not aware of them litigating with anyone. But setting that aside, I still want you to be in a strong position to make the right decision or, and a defensible decision. Next, this question of negotiating, okay? That's an interesting question. It's, it, you know, I've been doing this for a long time and I, and so I certainly have seen particularly under the old regime before the change in the law, negotiation being very common between bodies, governmental bodies and applicants over conditional use It is questionable in my mind how far we can take that because, you know, you're in a legal frame, you're in a, you've got a legal, let me put it this way. It seems to me that whatever decision you make has to be legally supportable. Are you able to ask for things within that context to explore whether QuickTrip may be willing to do, to make some adjustment or accommodation? I would say you're in the strongest position to do that if you're doing that from a place of strength, namely, we have evidence that shows there's a concern here about an impact and so we're asking if you'd be willing to address that concern. We want to have that conversation before we make a decision to see how you respond. And if that's what you mean by negotiation, I think that can be accommodated. But it has to be approached carefully and it has to be done, I think, within the context of the, the legal process that, that we have to operate in.
All right. Alder Person Reeves?
A couple of things and Director Schiel, you can correct me if I, if I'm wrong, but I think there was a question about, you know, are we just concerned about the, the car wash and the, the gas pumps? But I think, you know, we always look at traffic and safety. So, you know, I think we did that with Starbucks, we've, you know, many other drive-throughs. So I think, you know, that's only a part of it. I think, as I understand from Director Schiel, this is, it needs a conditional use permit because they have those things, but safety is important regardless of the type of business. So that, I think I'm right about that, right, Director Schiel?
No, we're always considering safety.
Yeah, and I think in, you know, with Starbucks, for example, we did put some conditions on that approval, some signage, some striping, things like that. I assume that, that would be something.
Well, let me.
Those, those were, those were amenable by the applicant.
Yeah, and, and there's two different ways in which we might be talking about some of these things. One is on the conditional use issue, but Rodney, would they also need site plan approval?
Yeah, they, they obtained site plan approval by the plan commission already, subject to the COP being obtained.
Okay, and the site plan approval under our code is a plan commission decision? Is that correct?
It is.
Okay.
It is.
So the site, the plan commission has apparently already decided that it's satisfied with the site plan in terms of, you know, how it's laid out, driveway entrances and exits, traffic circulation. That stuff is typically addressed in the site plan approval process and they've got an approval of a site plan. So the question of how traffic would be a factor in the conditional use discussion is still up in the air in my mind in terms of how that might factor into your decision.
Did you have others?
Well, just, so presuming, just for clarification of process, presuming we're going to postpone until the 11th, I'm assuming we'll have a presentation because those of us that are not on plan commission are not privy to all the, you know, I have some questions about the plan and given the time constraints, I'm not sure that that would make sense to do that tonight. So I just wanted to be clear that, that we'll have a full presentation or be able to ask more detailed questions on the 11th. And then I would also like to request that we not vote on it that night because if people bring information, I'd like time to absorb it.
I agree.
So I would not want to vote on it on the 11th. That's just my recommendation.
So as far as the presentations, we already have one from the plan commission that should be considered.
People can watch that and you can.
Is it okay to do another presentation at that next plan commission and then the public hearing and use both presentations?
Yes.
Okay. So I think we can make that request out of them. They'll be very similar presentations, I would assume. So a couple of things that I wanted to mention, you know, the easement, it doesn't sound like at least the entrance to the easement from Highway N is something that we control. It's something that the county is, is looking at the right in, right out there because that's not actually part of the easement. Is that correct?
I don't know. I'm not really up to speed on that issue.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's one of the, the issues with the traffic that came up during the study is that they're going to require a right in, right out.
County is? County is?
Yes.
Because it's County Highway?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's one topic. So I don't think the property owners really will have a say on that at the end of the day, because it's not actually part of the easement.
Well, right in, right out, that's a restriction the county's attaching to granting access to the road.
The other thing I heard is the property values. That was the other example. I don't know if you had that on your list, because, you know, we can sit here and say the property values are going to go down or they're going to go up, but we really don't have anything that proves it one way or another.
Yeah, this gets back to the difference between, you know, speculation and evidence. So if somebody simply says, you know, I think my property value is going to go up or going to go down, it strikes me as questionable whether that would be substantial evidence that you could base a decision on. But if somebody had, and the test, and the legal test, is it evidence that a reasonable person would rely on? And so you're going to have to look at what you're hearing and make a judgment, at least initially, you'll make a judgment, is this evidence that a reasonable person would rely on, and making a judgment about property value? And if you think it would, okay, and if you think it wouldn't, okay. Ultimately, if there's litigation, then we may have to fight about that. I will just let everyone know that, you know, if just someone simply says, I think my property value is going to go down, it might be hard for me to defend in front of a judge the notion that that's evidence that a reasonable city council would rely on. You might need something more than that.
President Hirsch, or Aldo Caravalla wants to be first.
Go for it.
Okay. I just wanted to, and this was, I appreciate Fred asking the questions and opening the door to the easement questions again, when I was waiting until we got to the CSM part of the, which was the next item that we're going to look at. But, so essentially, just to be clear, and this sounds like it might require some homework of Mr. Dregney, regarding the easement, so, is it as simple as if the entity that owns the second party of this access, in this case being the party that owns the Fast, what we're referring to as the Fastenal Building, says, I am not satisfied with how this is going to impact the easement to my property, I'm not satisfied with these additional easements that are proposed to be granted? Is that enough to just like, okay, then if it's, if it is not satisfactory to them, is this a done deal? And can they put the kibosh on the proposal to put a quick trip on this property?
I think that the likely answer is that if, if the situation is that the owner of the underlying property, not Fastenal, but the other owner says, I'm granting an easement to that land next to me that Fastenal sits on, I'm going to grant that land an easement, I'm putting it here, I'm putting it down on paper, and Fastenal says, I don't accept that, I think, and you're right, this will take some homework to verify, I think that's not, that that means that conveyance is not going to be recognized. I mean, it doesn't, you have to have an acceptance before an easement would actually exist. So, again, a little homework just to verify that, but I think that's the law. That's my best guess as I sit here right now.
Does that default then back to the original easement agreement? Or because they're going to change the function of the property, that that also alters the easement agreement?
Well, if there's an original easement agreement that remains in place, no one's agreed to change that yet, right? So that doesn't go away. What I'm hearing is that there's a suggestion, well, I've granted a new additional easement on top of what was there before. Is that what I'm hearing?
And I'm not sure if there's actually a written easement agreement for what's currently there. I haven't seen it.
Oh, okay. I don't know.
Yes, there is.
I haven't seen a written agreement. So if somebody has it, send it to us, because I haven't seen it.
I believe we have one.
What's that?
I believe there is one. I believe we have it.
Okay.
So Matt, if I can just add one thing, so the CSM that they're proposing, actually for the two parcels of the QuickTrip is looking to consolidate. If they place the additional easements on that by CSM, you're saying the adjacent property owner would have to sign off on that CSM? Because those easements are, maybe we can talk about this later, we're going to have to dig into it, but that seems to be unusual.
Yeah, I believe that that would have to be accepted by whoever the intended beneficiary is. Just like if somebody wants to dedicate an easement to the public, the city council has to say, yeah, we'll agree to accept that dedication. It can't just be done unilaterally by the landowner.
Okay.
But we'll do homework on it.
Yeah. Well, obviously, we have, the good news is we have over a month to figure all this out.
Well, not yet. We have a vote on that we're going to do that.
Oh, yeah.
But we want to make sure, you know, before we take a vote, if anybody else has any other questions that, you know, or something that you want Matt, or Rodney, or somebody to work on, you know, now's a good time. If you wake up in the middle of the night tonight in a cold sweat, feel free to email us, but we might not, you know, reply in two in the morning. But we will look into it, so.
Be home by then.
Huh?
I just hope to be home by then.
We're going to be out of here in an hour.
I just have one further question.
Go ahead.
It was brought up with the public about the, okay, so you have the right in, right out on Highway N, but the rest, you know, people turning left have to go on Cedar Brook. And that also might mean semis. I mean, I guess I don't, I'm not familiar with that street well enough to know whether or not it can handle a semi to be turning in and out of QuickTrip without causing traffic problems. I'm looking at, you know, Chief Chink's here. If he knows, does that road need to be modified? I mean, because if, I mean, I've interviewed QuickTrip for my job and another thing, but they do come every single day to replenish their produce and possibly gas as well. So that is a semi, at least one semi every day, and the gentleman from Fastenal says that he has four trucks per year, or per week, but he's already using the easement, but now the easement's going to be changing that it's right in, right out. So now his trucks might have to be using Cedar Brook as well if they're coming from the other direction. So is this road capable of handling all the semi traffic?
Mayor, if I can just suggest that the packet includes the turning information that shows how the traffic, semis would access the site. It does include accommodations or modifications to the right-of-way within County Highway N. So I don't know if you want to get into that presentation now, or if we should hold off for the public hearing, because the packet of material does show how that can be accommodated.
Yeah, but that's Highway N, Rodney. I'm talking about Cedar Brook, because there will be semis going into Cedar Brook, too.
It's in there.
Yep. Yep. It's on the exhibit.
It's in there.
And the other point that we should highlight is the fact that the easement that currently exists crossing the site, the Fastenal site can't access it with the larger semis contained only on their site. Right now, what they're doing is they're having to back into or from County Highway N with the longer semi, because they can't maneuver entirely on the Fastenal site and within easement. So there is that kind of background that has to be explored as to how semis can get to and from that site.
So basically, what Rodney's saying is currently, we've become aware recently that there's an issue with the way the easement's being used. I was told that for years, Fastenal was using a 48-foot semi trailer, and they were able to maneuver that within the easement alongside of the building and back up to the back overhead door. And somewhere along the line, they went to a 53-foot semi trailer, and they can no longer make that maneuver in the parking lot. So regardless of what happens with QuickTrip, that needs to be addressed, because that is not a good situation out there. Fortunately, most days, they're there very early, but having worked with Fastenal for eight years, I know there's days where the trucks are late, because, generally because of weather, that's not a good situation there. It needs to be addressed. And, you know, that's something that we're looking at.
And another factor, which I wasn't aware of until some folks educated me to this, and some folks spoke about, is the bus stop component on Cedar Brook. I don't know how that works, or how that gets addressed, or how, if it's a designated bus stop, and whose bus stop is it, and all that sort of thing. So there's more questions.
We have to learn. I don't know if it's the school districts, or if it's a private bus, but we can check into that. If it's the school districts, you know, maybe they can, you know, change the route or change where the pickup and drop-off is. I don't know. I would have to talk to them and see. I'm sure they're using it for a reason, the way it is now. More than likely, they'd like to continue that, but we could certainly find out if there's any flexibility from, if it is the school districts, I don't even know for sure. Anything else? Go ahead.
I guess then I will make a motion to send this back to planning until the April 11th meeting.
Second. All right. There's a motion by President Hirsch, a second by Aldo Reeves. Is there any discussion? Does everybody kind of understand what that meeting will look like? Any questions about the structure, format? In the meantime, we would send you out the evidence from the Plan Commission meeting where they did their presentation, as well as the public hearing portion of it, for the people that spoke there. So you would have that information, and plenty of time to review that, because the presentation itself was about 45 minutes. So, you know, you might have to do it in chunks, just squeeze it in your schedule, but we'll send that out by email.
Mayor, is the motion to refer back to planning, or is it, is it to refer to a joint meeting of the Plan Commission Council for April 11? I heard her say April 11.
Yes, Rodney, to have the joint meeting on April 11.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And is anybody opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Last item on that topic is the certified survey map. I don't know if there's a reason to go through that or not. What do you think?
I'd like to save that till April 11.
I would think it should be tabled, Mayor.
Okay.
Or follow along with the CUP.
All right, so I have a motion to that effect. Anybody?
Motion to table.
All right.
Second.
I would say postpone is the word you should use.
Yep.
Otherwise, you have to-
Put it on April 11.
Yeah.
Put it on the meeting after when we make a decision on this.
Okay. So it'll be on the same agenda, Candy, for that joint meeting, and we'll work on-
No, no, it'll be later, because we're not making a decision on April 11. We're making the decision on-
Can't really hear, Regina.
I said, we're actually making a decision on April 25, not April 11 for the CUP, as requested by Reeves, and I actually was going to request that as well.
There might still be some value of going through the CSM, and if there's not, we just won't. I don't know. What do you think, Rodney? Is there value, or should that wait?
Well, I think it would be part of the presentation related to the overall package. So if you're not going to take action on the CUP, you would probably delay action on the CSM until that time.
But you would still want the presentation.
I believe so.
Okay. All right. Does that sound reasonable?
Presentation, yes. Action, no.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right. Any more discussion on that? Did you catch that, Candy?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, great. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. You guys want to take a couple of minutes, or you want to keep going?
Yeah.
All right. We're going to take a little recess. People, you're welcome to stay or go. I know it's getting late, so thanks for being here.
Stand up. I have a rig of borders. It's kind of limited here.[1213.15]
Yeah. But that's too late. This one's already in the works, so. That's what the evidence shows. Back. Biden.
It is.
So. This.
People, oh yeah, somebody took out a, took out one of the signs. You don't want to, once they get used to it, they understand. Very simple.
But.
And it's gonna support. There.
Right now. And it was. That he's coming out of China or Russia, no one's gonna look.
Whole area. But I hope, hope. Stable trade. He's there.
That. Are we allowed?
That really, I'll prove the talk. Always like seven, I'll tell them. While.
We're gonna start in a minute. That's where it was.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
We've gotta talk about his paperwork.
Yeah, I know, that's next after this.
Yeah. I saw that on my list today and I was like, darn it, he didn't.
Let's get through this then.
Yeah. If the job's closed with Maggie.
Rodney, are you still gonna run the screen?
When I was talking with him, I.
I can. You want me to stick around for all the additional items? I don't know how long you're gonna take.
Probably, you just have one more, right?
Yep, and I'm happy to do that, but.
Yeah, if you wanna just take your item and then I'll go from there. It'll probably take me a minute to get it together here. I gotta close some stuff here. That one's done.
I haven't paid attention to the other things on the agenda after that. I didn't.
Well, we have utilities here, too, that's been waiting.
We have that.
Yeah.
Then we have.
Everybody's waiting.
All right. Everybody's waiting.
Everybody's waiting. Kelly's waiting in the back. She's already put her pajamas on. This guy waiting.
Are you gonna leave one item on the agenda?
You guys ready?
Okay.
All right, we're getting ready for round two here, so hopefully we'll be able to zip through this. I think what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go through, the next one is R twenty-eight. And then what I'd like to do is get the two utilities ones completed because Shannon has the longest drive home. It's okay, I want you to be able to get up in the morning, so. All right, so we'll, Rodney, when you're ready, we'll start R twenty-eight of twenty twenty-three. And that one came through the Finance Committee.
All right, R twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three is a resolution for, preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers for twenty twenty-three street and sidewalk projects. So move.
Second.
A motion by Schumacher, a second by Hirsch. Or Reeves, Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Schumacher, go ahead.
This is in preparation for road and sidewalk constructions. And that, this is something that we bring up each time to be able to set up the special assessments that would be for any sidewalk and/or retaining wall or other projects.
All right, anything you wanna add, Director Scheel?
Yeah, the listed streets that are subject to this preliminary assessment resolution are shown on the screen. It focuses on curb and gutter replacement, driveway apron replacement, sidewalk replacement. I think we've only got one property of infill for sidewalk installation. And just to inform the group as a whole, we've been working to put in a shared use path along the southern side of Jackson Street from Silverado to fifty-one. That'll be a concrete sidewalk section, and we'll be making accommodations for that as part of this process as well.
All right, and really, the other thing that was unique was Kensington Square Properties. They're kind of clusters, if you will, so I know you've also been working with those property owners to really try to understand what their assessments might look like.
Yep, I've been working with the condo association managers and trying to share information with them. And once the assessments become available, they'd like them distributed accordingly, and I'll honor that request.
All right, any questions on the special assessment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, Rodney, have a good night.
Thanks.
All right, next item we're gonna do, we're gonna jump up to, we have two items from Stoughton Utilities, so R thirty-two, and I'll put that one up there. And this is coming from Utilities Committee, and that's, that Alder Person, is it? I always forget. Hunt?
Well, I have to defer to Shannon because I wasn't present for the meeting. I think I was on vacation.
Do you wanna introduce the item and then she can go through it?
Sure. Resolution from the Utilities Committee to the Stoughton City Council, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the write-off of Stoughton Utilities delinquent account balances and invoices deemed uncollectible as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And I move as written.
All right, a second. A second by President Hirsch, and then, go ahead, Shannon.
Yeah, so this is something we do annually. This year, the balance is one thousand dollars. These are balances we cannot collect. Some of them are sitting in state debt collection. It's been beyond a year, though, so we are gonna go ahead and write them off. If the Department of Revenue would be able to collect those accounts, we'd go ahead and take those dollars back and offset our uncollectible accounts. There are typically, this balance is much higher. We have other invoices, things we invoice for outside of general billing, you know, car verse pole, other sorts of things we bill customers for. We are holding off on writing those off at this time. I believe Shannon and myself are gonna have some more collection efforts yet this year. So in the event we aren't successful, we'll come back with you again for those next year. But I think we should be able to collect on some of those yet, so we're gonna hold off on those other invoices. But right now, we're asking for your write-off for these, the number that we have there. And this was approved unanimously, Utilities Committee.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? Alder Person Legaki?
Just in the resolution, there's two dollar amounts. There's the one thousand twenty-seven ninety-six that is talked about as the fiscal impact, but then it's resolved for the two thousand thirty-five fourteen. What is that rough difference of a thousand eight dollars?
Um, that might just be a typo. I believe it's just a thousand dollars. Yep, the write-offs listed, it's just the one thousand twenty-seven ninety-six. I think that might just be a typo in there.
So the amount that should be in the be it resolved statement should be one thousand twenty-seven ninety-six?
That's correct.
Right. Yep. All right, good catch. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And are there any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item also came from Stoughton Utilities, Alder Person Hunt.
Yes, approving a waiver of the requirements to issue a notice of intent to dispose and the solicitation of sealed bids for the as-is, where-is sale of a used Virginia substation transformer as required by policy. And I would move to accept this with one qualifier that I would, I think Shannon can answer. The company that would be rebuilding or investigating the problem with the existing transformer, would they be the purveyor that we're buying the new transformer from? I mean, the new used transformer?
They are not. We actually purchased a used transformer from an investor-owned utility. So we are not repurchasing anything from the manufacturer of this transformer.
Okay, and then Mount Horab is purchasing our existing faulty one and paying to have it shipped over to Virginia to have it checked out, is that correct?
That is correct, yep, they're taking on all costs. And it's already been shipped there, they've already paid for that. They are taking on all costs to have a diagnosis to why it failed. And that information will be given back to us so that we have the information in case there's something wrong at our substation that may have caused the failure or did the substation just fail prematurely. So they will, we will get that information back from the manufacturer as well. That's an agreement of the sale to them.
Okay, well, I would move to accept as that resolution is written.
For a second?
Second.
A second by Alder Tokowski. All right, any, anything else you wanna share about that one, Shannon?
The only thing I wanna say is, we are bringing this, it seems we're doing this after the fact, and I wanted to explain that generally, we have transformers that fail, meters we get rid of, wire, and we, it's salvage. Someone comes and picks it up and we get a salvage value for it. So we had really viewed this as a salvage situation until the manufacturer requested a bill of sale from Mount Horab. And then it became a sale, and consulting with Attorney Dregney, we were pointed to the disposal of city property policy, which required us to get council approval for anything over five hundred dollars. So which is why we are requesting you to waive these sealed bids requirements because we really already have this agreement in place with Mount Horab, and we would lose the diagnostics that they're gonna have, as well as we'd have to pay for shipping costs to get it back from Virginia. So I wanted to explain that as to why this is kind of coming up after the fact.
It's kind of a long story. They had the transformer that failed, and, you know, instead of, you know, waiting for a new one, which sounded like it was over a year and the cost was extremely high, they found a used one.
That's correct.
Is my understanding, and maybe you can fill in the blanks for me.
Yep, so in order, when this transformer failed, as you've heard, all costs are going up. Transformers, costs have skyrocketed. A new transformer to replace us, I think, was upwards of three hundred thousand dollars. So Jill had a great idea. She reached out to a local investor, a local investor-owned utility, knowing that they had a transformer that they were getting rid of. We ended up purchasing that transformer from them for about thirty-two thousand, I believe, in the hopes that if anything, it got us through a couple of years, so that transformer prices would stabilize out and we would get the benefit of not paying an increased pricing. So it worked out well for us, and it's working out well for Mount Horab. They're going to have this rebuilt, this transformer rebuilt, and then kind of float themselves as well till transformer prices drop.
So it's a good story.
It's, it's a complicated story, that's what it is.
Any questions or comments on this one? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your patience tonight.
Thank you, Shannon.
All right, that takes us back to item number thirteen, which is the PD restructure. Many of you have already heard some initial conversations on this one. We're gonna kind of walk through for the whole group right now, and I'll see if I can find the right document here.
You can start with the org chart.
Okay, I'm looking for it. Is it buried in one of these?
You had it for the finance one.
Yeah, I'm gonna pull up the finance packet quick.
It is in the resolution.
Is it in there? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you just didn't go far enough?
Yeah, it's just the next page.
It is. All right, fooled me because it was separate in the finance packet. And when it's this late, it doesn't take much to fool me.
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah. Reveal that, huh? All right.
Loud and clear over everybody.
Who wants to start? Chief Jenks or Director Gilliam?
We have to have the resolution read first.
Okay, so the resolution came from Finance earlier tonight. It also had been at Personnel, so who wants to take a stab at it? Finance?
I'll take it, yep. R twenty-nine of twenty twenty-three is a resolution approving the Police Department restructure. So move.
Second.
I think it was a tie, take your pick candy, either Jensen or Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher.
I keep going to, I keep thinking this is a touchscreen one. As Chief and Director Gilliam will elucidate in here, how they would like to restructure the Police Department, sort of resetting it back, but with one addition, is that true?
No, starting with twenty-three badges, ending with twenty-three badges. Brett, I thought you'd be able to recite that in your sleep.
What I meant by that was putting, I guess I meant, putting it back to two lieutenants.
Correct, two lieutenants.
That's what's in the past.
Correct, correct. So I'm gonna start out just a little bit here. We begin with twenty-three badges, we'll end with twenty-three badges. What we're trying to do here is set us up for the future and tie into the growth that's happening throughout the community, as well as having the appropriate levels doing the appropriate jobs, which is not happening right now. A lot of our lieutenant work is being pushed down just because of pure capacity. So I'm gonna hand it over to Chief at this point to have him go through and explain what's happening within the department, or what we would like approved.
I'd like to start out just saying we're fully operational, how everything we're doing currently works. The idea is just to improve our efficiency and then also offer some other opportunities, which I'll kind of get into a little bit here. What is currently being displayed is our current organizational chart. The key changes we're proposing are, again, adding an additional lieutenant and assigning a sergeant to investigations. So for the third, I guess. So for the third, I guess, time, just going through this again and stop me if I miss anything or if you have any questions at any time. So this is not really, really reinventing the wheel by any means. This particular chart illustrates what the PD operated under from 2014 to 2019. There were two lieutenants in place. A change was made to go to a fourth sergeant and that second or additional, the second lieutenant's position was dropped. As you look at it, you'll notice that there's also a detective sergeant. That particular title is new. We've always had a leader in our detectives in our investigations, but somewhat of an informal, uncompensated, not a supervisory leader, but just usually it was a senior detective. The idea here is to provide a lot of different things, a lot of opportunities from within. We're looking to offer the opportunity for more advancement by creating additional leadership positions and creating a more efficient workflow chart. Right now, as Director Gillingham had mentioned that we've discussed quite a bit, is that, we have so many different tasks that we try to complete. And right now, the tasks are kind of not really assigned in a very efficient fashion. Given this chart, I believe I'll be able to put those particular tasks and duties in a somewhat of a column to feed and kind of create a workflow going into the chart. The chart also indicates or illustrates how stronger of a base we would have. It creates some succession planning just merely by having more officers in a leadership position. That would help us in case of retirements, unforeseen injuries, someone leaves for another department. Last year, it was kind of, it was illustrated that it was a little thin at the top. So my hopes, my hope is to increase that. And so we're not as vulnerable if we lose someone. The idea of having an additional lieutenant would also put us in a position where we could do more proactive things, such as planning for the future. Right now, we're really thinking about tomorrow and maybe next week. I'd like to get to the point where we're looking ahead and strategically planning and forecasting our growth and looking at stats and analysis and see where we're going. We just, currently, just, we're kind of just staying afloat. Again, we're able to work and move forward. But this just would generally help us out quite a bit.
So to expand on that a little bit, as we started looking at our force, we have five officers that are currently at 13 months or less with our department. So adding that additional lieutenant in there as well as the additional sergeant, we're going to be able to have more boots on the ground. And that means having sergeants actually in the field that are able to be grooming and bringing those newer, greener officers up to speed and understanding the Stoughton way. They may be trained through the academy or another department they were with, but this is really going to get them to be active participants of the Police Department the way that we want it to be operating. I think the other thing that you're going to see here is the redundancy that's necessary between the two lieutenants as well as the cross-functionality between those four detective or the four sergeants. And the position on the org chart for the detective sergeant does show the detective sergeant over a separate group, but that also needs to go to the left because there will be cross-functionality. If a sergeant's out, Chief has said, you know, that, that position is slotted to go right over there and fill in for those other sergeant positions. So you'll see that cross-functionality there. Chief?
And also just the idea of these additional positions creating interest within the department. Last year, the city spent quite a bit of time talking about retaining employees and the cost of recruitment and the cost of training. I believe that having these additional positions, these opportunities, would increase our retention rate. We have, as Director Gillingham mentioned, five officers with 13 months or less. We also have two dispatchers with a year or less. So we have a very inexperienced, green department, but almost a perfect mix because we have some solid veteran officers. We have some really good folks in leadership position. And our field training officers do a spectacular job. I guess I could just go on here with the five officers. I mean, their talent that was brought here is just amazing. We're really lucky. We weathered the storm, thinking that people would leave for other departments. I think looking at what the city has offered and our culture that we're building, it really contributes to retaining those guys. And I think we're going to be better off in the long run.
Any questions on the org chart or reasoning behind it? Okay. Tim, we can switch to the next slide that talks about the costs, if you don't mind.
Sure. Is it this one or did you want the others?
Why don't you use the one with the blue? It's a little bit easier to understand.
Which one?
The one that has the blue lines on it.
That was the one that we used earlier tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, let me just pull that up here.
Think that is a better illustration.
That would be this one?
Yes. So we're going to start at the top there. And this is talking about, we already have a procedure or a process that we've gone through with the PFC. And we do have a list of approved individuals that can move forward into this position. So we don't have to go through a new hiring process, which is fabulous for the chief to be able to move forward. So moving one of our existing sergeants from their existing position into the LT or the lieutenant position, you're talking a wage difference of $6.51 per hour. If this is approved tonight, we would have approximately 1,680 hours that we would need to account for. If you go across, you're going to see that I've added in the WRS, which is our Wisconsin Retirement FICA, and come up with a cost difference between those two. And that brings us to, I'm struggling here with my readers, on $13,002,931. Now, Chief, as we were going through this process, said, you know, I think by adding this position in, I should be able to decrease or offset those costs with overtime. And so what we did is we received the overtime from the Finance Director, David. Thank you. And we took into consideration 25%, which would be those four positions. So that's a savings of, or it would be a cost of $16,776.51. So taking that into consideration, 25%, we're actually going to come out ahead provided those overtime hours are accurate. Now, again, we all know that something could happen and that could send, send the numbers in a different direction. But we should be to the positive of $3,557.20. So let's just call that one zero. The next one is the moving an individual into the detective sergeant. Can you arrow down, Tim? Okay, if you look at the very bottom here, we have taken into consideration in all three, looking at a highest-paid officer, a lowest-paid officer. But we know for the position and the requirements for the job, it's going to be a detective moving into that position, we would think. Now, before, when we met with Finance, we had said that there would be a cost of $61,3246, which is highlighted there in the green, or in the orange. But as you could see, we were talking before, really that's a position that's already budgeted that we have to, have to fill. So we said $6,132 for the cost. It's actually not going to be that. Chief?
About $1,990 less than we forecasted. Yep, there, there we go. Sorry, I had the wrong one on the screen.
Okay. Thank you, Regina, for pointing that out. Appreciate it.
I was like, what, I had his and looking up there, I'm like, wait, that's the one I'm seeing.
Too many windows.
Okay, so now we're under the second blue line on there. We're talking about, we need to move somebody then into that detective position. And if we moved an officer, there's two different pay options there. Again, we're going to want to take somebody with experience. So I have taken the probability of taking the officer at $3,851 and that individual, individuals would be a total cost of $1,990. So overall, the cost we have on here would be $81,2246. As Chief just said, it's probably going to be more like five grand or four grand in there for total cost. So we're asking for an exception to the budget for that amount. Looking into 2024, we would be going in with a deficit of around that $4,000 to $5,000.
And we believe that, you know, due to, you know, vacancies, you know, we have this year covered.
Correct, correct. Any questions on the math or anything there?
So on the total on the resolution, it said $2,500, but you're saying?
It's actually going to be less.
So we had budgeted for two detective positions and we promoted Brandon Hill from detective to lieutenant. So that is still in the budget.
Dollars.
Yeah, dollar-wise, yep. So essentially, we would end up with one detective and one detective sergeant in Investigations, where just last year, we had two detectives.
Questions on that one for us?
All right. Not hearing any questions. So we, we have the resolution on that one. So hearing no questions, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
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 And are there any opposed? All right, that motion carries. And then here's the next one. That one also came through Finance as well.
Which one is that? All right. R30 of 2023 is a resolution authorizing and directing the Finance Committee to approve the updated police lieutenant position description. So moved.
Do a second.
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 Second by Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Schumacher.
Would that be in the header box there? Would that be the Finance Committee though or the Personnel Committee for a description, position description?
It'd be Personnel.
This, I don't, I think this is the one that we did not update any language. It's just being revived. Is that correct?
It's, it's just being revitalized, brought back in. So this position description was no longer used after 2019. So we're asking to bring this one back in. This is the second lieutenant's position, as-is.
An additional lieutenant. All right.
Correct, second lieutenant.
Anything you want to add from Personnel on this one?
No. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. As AJ mentioned, a lot of it's wordsmithing. And cleaned it up while the opportunity, you know, arose to look at it, but...
Any questions on it?
I just have one question. And this is, and I brought this already up to Brett and Lisa. Just when we're doing position descriptions, and I'm hoping that DEI Task Force or CACP, if we could add some language in about diversity, inclusion, or have training or something and everybody, not just police, but everybody's position. I mean, I talked to Brett and Lisa to try to go through new ones. And hopefully with, through the DEI Task Force, we'll get some better language that we can add into positions. I just want to get this out there before I forget it off the top of my head.
Yeah, sure.
But kind of thinking about language that we can use in everybody's position description that we can just cut and paste that would have that new language would be kind of cool.
And I know we've also had interest from council members to go through some training as well, AJ. As long as we're at it, council members are interested in going through some trainings as well. So I guess we'd rely on you to help identify what those trainings would be.
Absolutely. So just so everybody's aware, I don't want to get off topic here. But on Thursday, we have CivMec, which is our insurance company, coming in to start our training modules and establish what we're going to do for 2023. And we do have DEI on there. So we absolutely will make sure that we're getting, you know, those opportunities out to you if you're interested in participating. And/or there's also some online training that you would be able to do independently.
Yeah, because I think also for new, current council members and new ones coming in, we used to have training when we first got on the council. It'd be nice that that would be included going forward.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we just, maybe at a future meeting, we can figure out what that might look like.
Sure.
You know, because I think it's, it's important, but we really haven't established a mechanism to do those trainings, whether it's at a meeting or a workshop or what that looks like, maybe the whole. So I think that especially, you know, when we reorganize and we get some new council members on there, I think it's a good opportunity to have those discussions.
Fantastic, okay.
And I didn't mean to like point it out on this one. It was just like, we just been doing it and all of a sudden it's like, why, why are we not doing that?
Absolutely. Okay.
Okay.
Which one are we on? The sergeant?
Lieutenant.
Detective sergeant?
Thirty.
No, not yet.
Not yet.
So we had a motion in the second. Were there any questions or comments on this job description? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next one. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right. This is R31 of 2023, a resolution approving the police detective sergeant position description. So moved.
Do a second.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Schumacher.
And this one is, mirrors the, the current sergeant position, adds in handling of digital and physical evidence as well.
All right. And I think the chief might, might want to elaborate on this one a little bit because it's a little bit of a change, but, you know, the work hasn't changed. But certainly, the technology has really changed the way we currently and will be doing business in the future.
Yeah, absolutely. So first off, it's an operational change because currently, we don't have a supervisor assigned as a detective. So this would give the opportunity to have someone there that is authorized to make command-type decisions and to organize things and to reassign. I mean, we, every day, there's reports we have to go through and decide how to channel them. And that would be this person's job every day to decide where our workload is being steered. And one of the other components, which we had, when we had three detectives, typically, we would follow up with our victims. That's kind of gone by the wayside. And that would be a task I would assign to the detective sergeant, to follow up on our victims and see if we can help them somewhat. We find numerous times, we're seeing people that are just in that circle of violence where it never seems to end. And by offering some follow-up and some support services, instead of, lots of times, the last time they see is they're signing their 72-hour contact and their loved one's on the way to jail. This would give us the opportunity to help, maybe help both eventually, just that follow-up by, hey, are you doing okay? And also, as a supervisor, they would be in plainclothes. So typically, our investigators do things in pairs. So this would give the opportunity to have a supervisor with a detective as they investigate. Currently, they, well, they'll go alone or when there was two, they, there wasn't a supervisor on site. So oftentimes, the phone would ring and they'd ask permission. This would kind of, again, become more efficient. That person can make decisions on-site.
Any questions or comments about this one? So I think what we're seeing in the department, like I mentioned, a little bit with technology, there's a lot of requests that involve the cameras.
Yeah, so our amount of digital evidence just has increased so much and it's continuing. Just to remind you all that we have body cameras. We record a lot of things. That information's all downloaded. Our squads have cameras. We have microphones that are incorporated to the squad cameras. So all that evidence has to be saved and properly channeled and labeled and there's a retention policy. And right now, it's kind of spread out amongst us. Again, that particular task would fall on the detective sergeant.
Yeah, and I think just to elaborate a little bit on that, there has to be a lot of redaction that goes on with that.
Yeah, and that, that actually, as far as preparing that digital evidence for court and open records, falls more over into the office manager position. So this is just like the front end and the office manager provides the support for the rear end for distribution. But you're absolutely right, as far as redacting, especially as we're getting into the video redaction, the narrative redaction, that's fairly simple. getting into the video redaction, the narrative redaction, that's fairly simple. Just knowing what to redact is the question and how to do it efficiently. All right, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, the moment we've all been waiting for, because this is a springtime type of item. So we have our 34 of 2022. This one's coming from Public Safety, Alder Person Jensen. You want to introduce this one, Greg?
Yes, me. Just checking to see if Kelly's awake.
Oh, yeah. Do you want to introduce it?
I will introduce it. Resolution 34 of 2023, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license and special event license for the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce for Seton Emi Festival 2023, and I would recommend approval.
You're second. Second by Alder Person.
Second.
All right. Alder Person Jensen?
Yep. You've been waiting, Kelly, so.
Should have gotten more work done in the back there. All right, we're going to keep the fun rolling. So Seton Emi is coming up, May 19 through 21st. As it relates to Class B license, the application is consistent with what we've done in the past with a beer tent in the south parking lot, encompassing that south parking lot, also having the Viking games there, which last year, we adjusted some of our ADA parking to take up Jefferson Street. Therefore, Jefferson Street is through traffic. So that is, that worked out well last year. We would still have the Sunday parade, so street closures on Sunday for that. From last year, about a month prior to, we realized that there just wasn't enough participation for the Saturday parade, the youth parade. So for the foreseeable future, there will no longer be a Saturday parade in the Seton Emi Festival until, until it wants to come back. One new item I'd like to do is putting up a tent like we do in the Division Street and the south parking lot, weighted in the City Hall parking lot, just to bring a little bit more attention that there's events there. Again, not staking in the ground, so kind of following city code and, and attributes there. And now the fun part, because we can't have a Seton Emi the past four years without something changing. Back in November, we realized, or we found out that our race partner was not able to take on the Seton Emi Classic. Our race partner has had this program in its hands and 100% taking that over for the past four years. So we did our due diligence to find a new partner to keep the tradition and the integrity of the Seton Emi Classic, and we are making it classic, and we're making it Stoughton. So that route has now changed from a point-to-point, starting in Madison, ending at Mant Center. It will now be a loop, starting and ending at Mant Park, going through residential neighborhoods, utilizing the trails in the, in the city area and some of our local streets. Therefore, the safety of the runners and the volunteers that are involved is one of our number-one aspects. We're not using county highways. We're not crossing county highways. We're actually taking down a lot of the police resources that we need and only needing about five for the entire race, and then being able to utilize more of our community with the water stations and course marshals. And there are routes within the packet there, if you had any questions.
All right. Any questions or comments on this? Sure beats a drive-by parade, I must say.
At this point, I take that back.
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
So you're going to do, you can do the full 20 miles just around Stoughton?
Yep. So everything will be a loop. So with the 20-mile, that's the longest one. A full 10-mile point, we'll start at Mant Center, go through neighborhoods, and it'll end up at Viking Park at the dock area, right at B, which will be a 10-mile point. At that point, they'll turn around and do the entire route back. The only one not starting at Mant Center is the 2-mile, so that'll start at Business Park, take the trail down, take the same route, and then end at Mant Park.
Looking for the maps here. Yeah, the maps are in the packet. I'm not sure if I have the right one here, but.
I do have one printed out if people needed to look at it.
So they would be crossing 51 to get to Mant Park?
One.
Yep, they'd be crossing 51, and we've, we've looked at the intersection of Division Street because Division Street's already closed with festival, festivities on both sides of that. So I've worked really hard with Lieutenant Hill and Lisa with EMS and the parks department, Streets Department, to make sure that the route is kind of cohesive on all departments.
All right. Any questions about anything in here? We're going to have perfect weather this year. I can feel it.
Absolutely.
No, I didn't. I'm going to make a proclamation or something for it.
Proclamation for only good weather outside of my.
Well, you know, when it snows, I get blamed for that, too. So I'm taking the good with the bad here. No questions on this one? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. And as long as Kelly's here, she likes to make good, efficient use of her time. So we have another item that was also at Public Safety. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 35, 2023, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license and special event license for Stoughton Chamber of Commerce for the Coffee Days Festival. And I would move for approval.
You're second?
Second.
Second by Tokowski. Alder Person Jensen.
This one's easy. Copy, paste. So again, as it relates to the special event license, utilizing the part, Mant Park, and then having an enclosed beer tent area. Nothing new with this festival, so just getting some good tents up for shade or weather protection, sampling coffee, arts and crafts, car show, hoping for great weather, so those cars show up. Just having a good day festival here.
We are having coffee this year, right?
We're having coffee.
And then how about this relay for life, is that the same day again this year? Do you know?
Yes. So they, they are a vendor at the Arts and Crafts, selling the luminaries, and then we kind of share, I, we share resources with the tent so that they can do their relay the evening of Saturday.
I thought that was awesome last year.
Yep.
Any questions or comments on this one?
How early must I get there to buy a mug?
The hand-rolled ceramic mugs sell out in about an hour and a half to two hours. So between nine and 10.
Right away.
Yeah.
Right away. Early as possible.
You know, if you volunteer, you'll be there when they start selling them.
Brett knows all about volunteering for me.
I'm surprised you don't have the mug.
I just haven't gotten, usually, we're out of town.
Oh.
So it's always like around, we usually will have a vacation or something around that time.
Yeah. All right. Any questions or comments for Kelly? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. All right.
Thank you, everyone.
It's the 10. Are we going to make it?
Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly. Last item is coming from Public Works, Alder Person Mieski.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is Resolution 36 of 2022, review and approve the contract for tree removal services to the lowest responsible bidder, which is Jim's Tree Service, LLC. And I so move.
You're second?
I'll second.
Second by Caravelo. Jim's has been waiting patiently tonight. Any questions or comments on this one? Anything you want to say, Alder Person Mieski?
No, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay. All right. Alder Person Jensen?
Yeah, I've noticed on the agenda, it appears to be a typo. The last three items, items 18, 19, and 20 are all showing as 2022 rather than 2023.
Oh, on the resolution?
Yeah, the resolution, I believe, is correct, but the, but the agenda is not, so I think can't.
Okay. Yep, we'll get that corrected. You were the only one that noticed that. That's pretty good. All right. Any other questions or comments on this one?
Well, there's also in the resolution for this, if I may, there is a, another typo under fiscal impact where it says no to exceed $24,000. So there's a T that needs to be added and crossed.
Oh, somebody at 10 o'clock must have.
Yeah. Well, Director Abir is there. Anything you want to say?
Yeah, I've been waiting all night to talk about this one. Actually, Alder Caravelo, I did have the T on my resolution to bring that up, too, so I did catch that as well. This is a standard contract for tree removal to supplement the work that we do, sway trees that are, we cannot do in-house, that are either too dangerous for our staff to do or within 10 feet of electrical services. We do not do those. We also, in this contract, got pricing to help during emergency situations. So if you have a windstorm like last March, that we can tap into this contract and bring these, bring Jim's on to help out with any tree damage that's in emergency situations, that we can utilize this contract. Also, this allows us to work outside the right-of-way because the pricing typically for these types of contracts is for along the street to do, it's easier to set up to access on the street versus getting into parks or on trails. So we added a section here to do that work as well.
All right. Sounds like a, a great agreement you put together.
Yep. And the pricing is, is actually really good all across the board, so we're, we're pleased. And the reason we have not to exceed, not no to exceed, but not to exceed $24,000 is that's within our budget.
Okay. Any questions for Director Abir? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed?
No.
None opposed. Okay. And then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.
I'll second.
Motion by Jensen, the second by Caravelo. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed?
No.
Huh?
Fred wants to.
No, none opposed.
Oh, okay.
You want to go for another hour, Fred, or what's going on?
I'm just getting warmed up.
You can be here all by yourself, Fred. Might be a neighborhood meeting going on yet. All right. We are adjourned. Have a good night.